Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting followed by a work session of the Salisbury City Council. So I'd like to call the special meeting to order. I'd like to ask--
Will that work?
Yeah, where's your-- I mean, I can read it--
Is Mark here?
If you give me a minute. I can read it if you give me a minute.
Okay, yeah, you can read it.
Thanks, George. I just gotta pull it up, hold on. Nobody has it out.
I'd ask everyone--
Oh, here.
I'd ask everyone to please silence electronic-- any electronic devices, and if you have to make a phone call, please make it outside of the room. If an emergency should arise, please exit the room, make a left-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If that area is blocked, please make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall, make another right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall, and go down those stairs. If you need assistance, we'll be happy to provide it to you. Please answer. Please do not use the elevators in case there's an emergency.
He's out of the hall. Mark!
He's lost.
He was doing the prayer.
In three minutes, I've lost control.
I can read it.
All right. I'll take a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
Settle.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll take a motion to approve ordinance number 2582 for the second reading.
Move. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Craigery.
More than mine?
I've got it. Mr. Tellman.
Thank you. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Maryland Department of Planning for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $19,810 and approving a budget amendment to appropriate the grant funds for the City of Salisbury 2020 census outreach activities, whereas the Maryland Department of Planning received a general fund appropriation in FY 2020 state budget for funds to establish the 2020 census grant program, and whereas the purpose of the 2020 census grant program is to provide grants to the Maryland local governments and nonprofit organizations to support community outreach activities prior to and during the 2020 census, whereas the accurate counting of the population of the state and its local jurisdictions and the collection of basic demographic and housing information has a direct impact on the distribution of federal resources, whereas the accurate, inaccurate, and equitable distribution of federal resources is critical to the future of the state of Maryland, the City of Salisbury, and whereas the MDP has awarded 2020 census grant to the City of Salisbury, which provides funding in the amount of $19,810 for the 2020 census outreach activities, and whereas the city must enter into a grant agreement with MDP defining how these funds must be extended, and whereas 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids contracts requiring an expenditure in excess of the amount appropriated for that general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office department or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Planning to accept grant funds in the amount of $19,810 and be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows: increase in the 2020 census grant revenue account, increase in the 2020 census grant expense account, both by $19,810.
Any questions or comments? During now, I've called a motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2582, for the second reading. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. The vote is four zero. Motion is passed. Any other business for the special meeting? During none, the meeting is adjourned. Welcome to the work session for February the 18th, 2020. We have a few items on the agenda, and we'll go through them as expeditiously as we can. First up is Hobbs Road Annexation Introduction. Mr. Holland, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
At the front of you is amended annexation. Just give you a brief summary. Back in 2007, Mayor City Council approved this annexation of approximately 39 and a half acres off of Hobbs Road. The annexation had a planned development which included several office buildings, restaurants, a couple of hotels with conference space. And a year shortly after this annexation approved, the financial market bottomed out, which made financing for this project pretty much impossible. Back in the fall, the representatives of Hobbs Road approached the city about the current annexations for this property, and even with the improved financial market, real estate market, the current annexation still makes it infeasible to develop this property. So we were asked to go back, and I've got Mike Sullivan here, who's our consultant. He's drafted up the amended version of the annexation, and he will be able to explain it.
Mr. Sullivan, could I say it?
Could I say it too, Mr. President? Would it be all right if I invited Hobbs Road Development LLC's representative to the table?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. President? Mr. Badger?
So, Mr. Holland already gave you all a rundown of the process, which is effectively approximately 40 acres was annexed by the city adjacent to Purdue Stadium. It was planned for a pretty intensive development, something that certainly would have been excellent to see if it had been able to come to fruition, and ultimately, it was unable to. And in 2019, the representatives for Hobbs Road Development of Mr. Badger and their real estate consultant, Mr. Randy Bendler, who's here today, approached the city administration wanting to see if there was a pathway to reconfigure the annexation agreement that would allow for development of the property, but also honoring the commitments that were made by developer for annexation. The agreement that was prepared in '07 is much different than the kind of agreements that have been prepared for the city council to consider, at least over the last 24 months. But really, with respect to some of the terms, especially some of the assessments that were imposed upon developer, those are assessments that I had not seen prior to this particular agreement. Namely, there was a process by which developer would have to make a contribution, whether to the city or to some charitable organization that had been identified by the city, to promote workforce housing in the area, and that was done based off of-- I think it was done based off a building square footage basis. And likewise, there was a development consideration, which is generally included in all annexation agreements. And in addition, there was another assessment imposed. Doing rough math, I come to a total amount somewhere in the range of $533,000 would ultimately have to be paid by the developer for annexation. And the two numbers are straightforward. They're included in the agreement, and that's $205,318 and $248,000. With respect to the workforce housing, what I did was I basically ran the average, multiplied it by the amount of square feet in the acre, then multiplied it by 39.37, which is the size of a parcel. And then assuming a building square footage area of approximately 20 percent of the lot, I got to a number somewhere in the range of $80,000. I added that back in, and that gets you to the grand total of $533,218. What we are proposing now is an annexation agreement that is consistent with the annexation agreements that have been put in front of the city for its consideration very recently. And in lieu of the tri-- the triconfiguration of the assessments contained in the '07 annexation agreement, you have a flat development assessment with an aggregate amount of $354,774. Likewise, that amount is scheduled over a period of 60 months. The amended and restated agreement provides for payment upon execution, but all of this is for your consideration, and truly, there's no wrong answer here. This is all purely a matter of your discretion, and your prerogative dictates. Likewise, we worked with Wycomico County to determine what, if anything, was to be done with improvements to Hobbs Road. The original annexation agreement required that developer would be responsible for making improvements to Hobbs Road so that it would comply with county public work standards. That annexation agreement was executed in '07, and during that time, the city and county shared planning and zoning services. So the development process with respect to the city's due diligence in creating the annexation agreement was one where its position was effectively congruent with that of the county. Now, because of the bifurcation of those services, we needed to reach out to the county to make sure that the county would still be responsible for Hobbs Road, that they weren't seeking for the portion that must be improved and be annexed, and likewise, that the requirements laid out in the '07 agreement would stand for now. And turns out, that's exactly the case. Moreover, there was discussion about extending water and sewer. Correct me if I'm getting down in front of my skis here a bit, but informally, we believe that the developer will be able to connect to water and sewer utilities through the pump station that's prominently located on that unimproved mound when you hop off the bypass onto Route 50. And that should make development of the parcel even more feasible than it was already planned. Otherwise, the agreement effectively speaks for itself. If the city council were to ask my opinion, I would say that I would have zero problem with you guys pursuing it as it's originally drafted. I say all that to say, though, I'm sure Mr. Badger might have some differences in opinion. So, that's why he's here.
So you invited him to the table, which is good. I appreciate that. Actually, surprisingly enough, I probably had fewer differences of opinion with Mr. Sullivan than even he may think. But in reality, maybe there are few, but maybe bigger differences of opinion. But basically, as you've heard, the property was annexed back in 2017, and that was in the go-go, anything goes kind of era, and there were clearly big plans for it, and they've all, obviously, all fallen through. I think it's also key to know that there have been three specific projects that we were hoping, or that the owner was hoping to be able to develop there, and they've all fallen through. The original one was the one that Michael and Bill had mentioned, but with a couple of condominium, office buildings, retail buildings, restaurants, coffee shops, and two hotels with conference centers and conference spaces. So that one fell through. There was a subsequent one, Randy could tell us for sure, was that the Rommel--
Rommel Harley-Davidson wanted to build out there, and when their engineer went through the annexation agreement, found out a number of the requirements in there, it proved to be very, very expensive to develop the property. So they actually ended up finding a piece of ground across the highway near Beagle Park Drive, and then after that, ended up leasing the facility over there from the old ground mound. And then, most recently, we had the sheriff's department that wanted to go out there, and because of the convoluted requirements in the agreement, it just proved too expensive for them to be able to do what they wanted to do there. And they subsequently went out to the Westwood Development and forced them around.
And that was at the point that I first approached the mayor to talk about the possibility of amending the annexation agreement because the sheriff's office was interested in this parcel, and that's when that one fell through. So that was not that long ago. I think Randy can speak to the fact that this property is primed for development and commercial development, which would be beneficial financially to the city as opposed to residential, which may not be quite as financially beneficial. Randy, I don't know-- I think he could tell you, and I'll tell you right now, the current owner is not intending to develop this property himself. You might want to--
Right. Yeah, they would like to hopefully be able to have the annexation agreement modified so that it's consistent with the other annexation agreements that the city's been working with in recent years to make it a viable parcel property that a developer's been committed and willing to take over the project. It's certainly a nice parcel property, very convenient to a lot of access points, and we think it'll be marketable once the agreements are revised.
But we're still kind of dead in the water with the current existing annexation agreement, the obligations under that. So we appreciate your willingness to consider amending it and revising some of the obligations. I think one of the owner's biggest issues in this matter is-- are the taxes that he has paid over the last 12, 13 years, since 2007. He's paid a total of $749,781.30, just a hair under three-quarters of a million dollars in taxes that have been paid for this property. And frankly, without the city having any obligations or responsibilities with respect to the use of that property and not having to police it or anything of that sort, so he feels like if that $750,000 includes county and city taxes, so if you cut that roughly in half, he's $375,000 has gone to the city in the last 12 to 13 years, without the city having an awful lot to use that for, with respect to this specific property, anyway. And I think essentially what the owner is saying is, the $354,000, however you get to that, and I'm not-- still not all that clear on it, our request, and I think it's being addressed, is we're asking to be treated like other annexations that were started now in this area. And obviously, we are much, much better in that situation than we were way back. The question really is, what is this development assessment for? And in the agreement, it says specifically that $354,774 is for the purposes of beautification, restoration, and revitalization improvements to existing neighborhoods within the city or for any other purpose deemed necessary and appropriate by the city. The costs are not tied directly to this property at all. In fact, those sound like purposes for which just general taxes that he's paid for the last 13 years would go. So our request is that perhaps that you consider saying, well, the $354,000 makes sense, and we can accept that, but give us some credit for what we have paid, that $375,000 that we've paid over the last 13 years without the city having any specific obligations for this property. I think for precedent value, we could certainly agree to the number as long as we were given credit for that. But at this point, as I understand it, even $354,000 is going to make this property difficult to market. Randy can maybe can talk more about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It's just an added expense that is going to hinder viability.
Randy, could you come up, maybe, and--
Just pull over the other chairs. Chair on the side.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, so that would definitely hinder the viability of a successful project for the level of coming in for the project.
Yeah, as we said, the current owner is not inclined to be the one who wants to-- who is going to develop this property. He's kind of feeling like his time for developing property has passed him by. It's time for the next set. But at this point, to find somebody who would be interested with these kinds of obligations against the property, it's just-- it makes it very difficult, if not impossible. And that's why we feel that that would be a reasonable way of looking at this thing, say, hey, you guys have paid $375,000 worth of taxes over the course of the last 12 or 13 years, and really haven't gotten anything for it. Let's give them some credit for that and get something built out there to make this property viable and be able to increase the financial benefits to the city. Have you put this in writing to anybody in the city? No. The requests? I mean, we've discussed it, and-- Okay. I would think that that would be the first step. Summarize and get what you believe is fair, and then prepare it, and then submit it to the mayor's office, and then we'll go from there. I understand what you're saying. It's clear.
Where is the property located on Hobbs Road? Is it between--
Sort of right behind the ballpark?
Right on the left. As you go in, if you're coming--
It's right next door.
Between Route 50 and Hobbs Road.
Yeah.
West of the baseball stadium.
Yeah.
So, like, where the parking lot ends, it's that lot that--
Where the back entrance, where you can get it, where they let the overflow come out.
Oh, okay. It's on both sides of the off-ramp?
Yeah, the off-ramp. Correct. This might help you visualize it a little bit better. The off-ramp--
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I didn't make multiple. But it's those two pieces of property sort of cut in half by that off-ramp.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. All right.
I got you.
Mr. Mayor, any suggestions from here? You're in.
Well, one thing that I think I'd offer from my perspective, without having, you know, fully analyzed the competing proposals, is that I want to caution us, and I'd want to caution you, on the conversation about taxes as being a trade-off. You know, the assessed value of the property by the state of Maryland, you know, is what it is. And the taxes are not on some hypothetical future use of the property, but they're on the current use of the property. It's a vacant piece of land, and so if the state of Maryland says those are-- you know, that's the assessed value, then that's the value. So the taxes are for only the services provided to a vacant piece of property. Now whether that's, you know, if there was a need for police to come there or some other, you know, response, it is what it is. So it's not as if there's been taxation without the offer of services. It's, you know, I understand that there's a burden--
Right.
--or a perceived burden under the agreement adopted in 2007, and that there's some potential, you know, request for consideration. Just to look at it as a trade-off, I would just caution us on that. But I understand, I think we agree in principle that, you know, the climate in 2007 was, let's get all we can, and that is a different environment. Now, I'd also note that in the last four years, we've had more development than we had in any of the years prior to 2007. So, you know, we're in a better market now from a real estate development standpoint. However, that doesn't mean that the way annexation agreements were structured at the time was, you know, the ideal for getting what we wanted in terms of construction and action. There is certainly no desire, I think, on the administration's part, to see properties held up from development arbitrarily, I mean, to extract, you know, money to go into the funds that are authorized under law. That's not the objective. So our objective is to see people do what they want with their property, to be able to do something with it. So we're there. Let's round back, circle back, and then maybe we can offer a perspective or potentially, you know, a middle ground and understanding. So we'll work closely, of course, with DID. We'll work closely with Mr. Sullivan, and come back. So if you'll give us a work session or two, a couple weeks, and then we can all come back to the table.
And you still-- you can still put your stuff in-- Sure. Your request. Now, that'll get everything moving. Get it, yes. Yes. I understand. That's fine. That worked? Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Councilman Boda, that was quite a joke you made at the General Assembly.
Wow. That's spreading statewide. Wow. We don't want to just treat-- I hope there wasn't video of that. Guaranteed.
Next up, Colonel. How are you?
Sir, come on up. Are you? Good. So, we are asking for, as we have in the past, we had two vehicles that were totaled as a result of accidents, and we are asking for the insurance from those vehicles so we could use those to purchase. We usually put that back in our vehicle account to make a purchase for another vehicle, so we try to repurpose those funds.
Okay. And both of those vehicles were totaled?
Yes.
Any questions from the group? Consent us to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Wish they would all go that way, right?
Yes.
They're not going to.
Thank you.
City Charter change request, code of ordinance. This is Miller. Good afternoon.
Hello. Hello.
It is hot here.
American, it feels good.
I'm twenty.
What was that?
I thank you, everybody, for entertaining this request. So there's several items in the code and the charter that, for procurement purposes, are a bit outdated and don't give us the maximum amount of flexibility and nimbleness with which to respond to everyday requests, changing situations from when the code and charter was first written. So what I've prepared for you today is several changes, and we can go through each change one by one, if you'd like.
Okay.
The first change is the procedure for competitive bidding, and that is Section Right now, it specifies that we shall publish an invitation at least once in a newspaper. We feel that we have greater reach by also using electronic media to do that posting. Newspaper advertisements can also be quite expensive. It is a few hundred, several hundred dollars to do an advertisement that's literally a quarter of a sheet of paper. We could reduce that cost substantially, again, expand our reach by doing even two things. Number one, posting it on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, which is where we internally keep a list of vendors, say, you might call it a bidders list, and then also publishing it on the state of Maryland's procurement website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. So that's a minor change, again, to give us the flexibility to not just post in a newspaper, but to post in these other vehicles.
So when you're posting these requests out--
Yes.
Where do you receive most of your response from?
What do you mean? Geographically, where do we receive those?
I mean, just like if you put it on the newspaper or eMaryland Marketplace or the procurement portal, where's the spot that it comes from the most? Like, your response? Do you get people responding to the ad in the newspaper?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you, because right now, we get, say, a paper copy of every single bid, so it doesn't come in back through-- it doesn't come back through eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. It doesn't come back in through our procurement portal. I honestly couldn't tell you.
Is that maybe a question we could put on the form? Just like-- because sometimes you see it when you respond to something, hey, where did you-- did you see us here, here, or here? That way, we can monitor if we're spending a lot of money on newspaper ads, but nobody's responding to-- why are we requiring that, I guess is the question. But I guess maybe it's for public notification, but-- But who's reading it?
Right. And putting it out through more of a, an electronic media or medium seems to be the trend with most procurement agencies anyway.
So you wouldn't change the timing?
No, no.
You'd just change the...
No impact to timing. It's purely the vehicle. We are landlocked right now that we have to post it in a newspaper.
Got you.
It's not saying that we wouldn't ever use the newspaper. It's just we want to...
Or you want to have the ability to put it on electronic, which makes sense to me.
Right, correct.
So that requires a charter change. Keep changing the charter. Charter's a sacred document.
Men's chapter. Newspapers will be a forgotten document or something.
Yeah, that's, that's a code change.
Oh, that's just a code change? Oh.
For procurement, it's not specifically stated in the charter.
I feel better.
And I think we should add, that's due respect to newspapers that I offer.
Yes. But they are a...
Okay.
Maybe you're going by the wayside, that's all.
It is a change, it is, but it's a changing landscape. People get their, yeah, people get their information and... For a newspaper, I mean, who's buying a newspaper every day? Who, I mean, if I inform my ass of room, who in the room has a subscription to a daily newspaper that comes to your house every day?
Yeah, it's all electronic.
I have it, I try to.
You have electronics, but I don't look at the classifieds.
I do buy the newspaper sometimes because I feel like it's important to hold it. I do.
Okay, so do we have consensus to make the code change?
Yeah.
I think it's reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the second one. That's the harder one. That has the C word in it.
All right, the, well, there's, there's a few more code changes as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So the next one is 2.32.080. That's the disposition of surplus supplies. The way it's currently written, it says that we'll, council will declare, I'll declare as surplus all material and equipment costing $2,000 or more and listed on the capital asset inventory. This is interesting because it's always a conundrum when something costs $2,000. Well, 10 years later, is that the cost that you bought it at? Is that the cost that it is now? So I had wanted to clarify that to state that would be historical cost because there's probably some record or indication of what that item would have been purchased at. And then also clarifying this concept of, is it a capital asset or not? Right now, it's kind of, it's listed as an "and" situation. And if you look at the, this is where it gets confusing, the Capital Asset Guide for the City of Salisbury, you really never have an "and" situation where something is, costs more than $2,000 and is listed on the capital asset. And it's, it's a strange mix of wording. So what I'm proposing is that we sort of separate the two. That it's by saying items which are either considered inventory or a capital asset.
I think, I wish Keith was here because maybe it's different in the public sector.
This was his words, this was his recommendation.
But for a capital, you can't write off a capital out taking a hit. It's not totally depreciated. At least that's in the private sector. So we're assuming then that these are all totally depreciated items from a capital side?
Again, that, that I couldn't answer.
Can we find that?
Yeah. Keith and I have been talking about this language. And in, in our last conversation, and I hadn't even gotten a chance to tell Jennifer yet, but in our last conversation, he said that we may be able to eliminate those italicized words about the capital guide. Because if you just pick a value, whether it's in there or whether it's not in the guide, you go with a value. In other words, we want to dispose of things that were purchased at a certain value this way. And if they're less than this value, then department heads could just dispose of them. He, it did, and it was kind of weird because the Capital Asset Guide defined things of 1,000 or less as inventory and over that, then they became capital assets.
Because they're depreciated unless it's over $1,000.
And the number, this 2,000 number used to be lower. So, but what they were saying was it had to be listed in the Capital Asset Guide and be worth that much. That's the way it used to be. But we're now raising the number. And by raising the number, you kind of eliminate the need to make that distinction. Because the old number was below the Capital Asset Guide. The new number is above the Capital Asset Guide. So we may, we may not need that extra language change.
That would simplify it even more.
And that was my last conversation with Keith. We've kicked it around and...
Okay, that's, and that's fine. That's what you want to do. That's, I don't have an issue. The only issue I have is a depreciated, if something that's not fully depreciated. But I assume that if it's surplus, well, no, it could be.
Well, except that the city's not going to pay cane tax anyway.
Right. I just want to make sure that it's different than private sector.
Yeah, well, that the fact that we don't owe taxes is what really makes it different.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay.
The next item isn't a change to the code, but it would be an addition to the code. Now, this deals with change orders. Right now, change orders are handled via an internal policy. Searching my records, this policy sort of came into effect way back in 1994 that we said that any change order over $5,000 would come to council. So often you'll see me approach council with that. A dollar amount of $5,000 on a $100,000 contract or a $200,000 contract or an even greater contract amount, we really run into a lot of red tape. And it makes the, our, our efficiency with which we can respond to changes in the field very difficult because taking, getting something through, say, the Department of Infrastructure and Development, getting a change order process can take upwards of like two months.
Two months?
It can't, till it goes through the, not necessarily through them, but the entire process of understanding what needs to change because of an unforeseen condition, getting the, you know, vendor's paperwork, getting it on the council agenda, getting it back to the vendor to sign, getting it through legal. Yes, it can take a very long time. We ask then that the vendors really don't proceed with that work because the idea is we bring it back, a change order back to council to approve this change. Well, this dollar amount is so low and it hasn't been updated since '94. Now, this is, like I said, an internal policy. We've sort of already set precedent that we've approached council with some level of change orders. What I'm seeking to do is formalize that process by raising the limits. First of all, the only contracts that come to council for approval of a ward of bid are those contracts that are valued at $100,000 or more. That's per code. What I'm proposing is that change orders for those contracts that are $100,000 or more would come to council, but only those change orders that are 20% or greater than the original cost of the award. I've done a bit of research on this to look at what other entities do with regards to change orders. Some say, well, if it's, you know, if it's within budget and council's already approved the budget and the project itself has not exceeded the available funds or if the project has and the project has gone back to council, say, for a budget amendment, change orders don't ever come to, say, board level or council level. I was looking for some, you know, combination of maybe what others do versus what has worked in the past for us. When I've seen threshold amounts of when a change order does go to council for approval or board for approval, I've seen that 20% mark come up quite often. So that, that's my recommendation. Again, that would give the departments the flexibility and efficiency to be able to respond to changes that need to happen on the ground and not delay a project. So what you'll see is in addition to the code, what we've also created internally is a process and then what I call a, sort of a threshold summary. Council would only deal with change orders cumulatively greater than 20% of contracts that are valued at $100,000 or more. Internally, I would also establish a policy for change orders less than that amount so that they are appropriately approved internally.
Comments from any council people? I have an issue. The 20% from a $100,000 project is big. And we have fiduciary responsibility to make sure when we enter contracts and we know what's going on. I do have an issue with it.
That's not to say that there wouldn't be any oversight of change orders less than that amount, but that oversight would be handled internally. So for instance, contracts that are $100,000, I would recommend that not only the department director would sign off on that, but the finance director would sign off on it, that I would sign off on it, and that city administration would sign off on that as well. You would still have multiple levels of checks and balances to ensure that there is proper justification, proper funding for those amounts.
And we were all surprised to learn, I think, that the code doesn't speak to any notification whatsoever with respect to change orders. That's a practice that we got into, but, but there is no, the code doesn't outline any way for the administration to bring change orders to council for either notification or approval. So I mean, that, it's a good practice, you know? I think we all agree it's a good practice and it should be codified at some level. The question is just, at what, at what level?
And my, my thing is, I think 20% is too high. That's personal, so...
And even, I think with somewhere, you know, there should be some level of notification to council as too, as well. Because if, if, say, there's been multiple projects in a department over, over the year and they, and they've done a bunch of change orders.
That's what you're saying. You never, we...
Under, under the radar.
I'm just thinking in terms of...
But then all of a sudden, you know, three quarters of the way through the year, they come through and say, hey, we got to do a budget amendment for this because, well, we had a bunch of change orders. And that's kind of a, you know, a surprise.
I'm not saying that would be done, but my fear would be from a private sector approach is free $19,000.
Oh, yeah. No, and, and that's...
It can get, without notification...
And that's exactly what we're thinking too, is that while, you know, I implicitly trust, you know, our team, you know, I certainly think you can have absolute faith in the, the current administration, that level of publicity for transparency sake has value when you're talking about a significant percentage change in the cost of a project.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, think, think about the difference between, you know, a budget versus, you know, actual spend on any number of capital projects or projects that we've undertaken in the last seven years. You know, it happens, it happens with regularity. Now, I don't know. I mean, we could actually look back and say how many times a change order is on council agenda. One to two is maybe the average per council agenda. So like every legislative... One to two. You'd say less, Amanda? For, for projects, for a construction project or DID projects, you'd say? So less frequently, not...
Those would be the projects that, that fall into a category to create this...
Now, I also am recommending, what I handed out to you is a really nice recap of what would be our internal policy and who gets notified and who approves it. But you also, if you look down at the bottom, that tier five and tier six change order and move over to the right and look at that column that says process, I am recommending that council still does get notification of those change orders. But the approval process happens internally.
Could we do this? Could we add to that notification what the total cost of the project's change has been?
Oh, absolutely.
Meaning if there's more than one change order on a project?
If you do that, then we would still have, we'd still see it.
Right.
But the way that we, the way that we're originally talking about it, we wouldn't see it necessarily. We'd see each one, we'd see no notification of each one, but we wouldn't know cumulatively where we are with the project.
Yeah, so what, in addition to this, there will be completely new change order forms that will recap that. And that change order form, which now is usually just an, an internal document, but for instance, you would see the cumulative value of that change.
That's fine. That's fine. I, I can live with that. How about you?
I mean, I, I like the idea of if information's coming through and you can, you know, if the project's had two or three change orders, you know, maybe there should also be a flag put in there when we get to so many change orders within a project that it, it maybe needs to come back to at least for a discussion at a work session?
Well, again, it's, to do an either/or. My, my suggestion would be to have a, you know, that 20% amount, whether that's, you know, six change orders or one change order. I, I would just caution about the, the, well, do it if it's five change orders. Well, what if they, it really honestly, mir, wouldn't happen. Quite honestly, to that amount.
And I would object strongly to a change order being discussed at a work session.
No.
There's no precedent for that. I mean, you know, ever discussing a change order or any change to the expense of a project at a work session. Because, you know, again, historically, it's just a ward of bids where change orders ever appear anyway. And that's, again, only by policy at this point, not by law. So I, I would just say, yeah, we're, we're trying to add additional transparency, but, you know, to the law. But moving it to work session would just open the management of construction projects to group, group chat rather than like, you know, letting the, letting the engineers manage their projects, which I think we all want to be cautious of.
Yeah, that's not, that's not my intent, purpose. I think that we just...
But I understand, but I understand the point, which is some, so any indicator of a problem with a project budget associated with actual expenses, whether that's, you know, your point is the frequency or number of changes versus, you know, the amount could indicate something that the public should be aware of, we should all be aware of, whether that's the contractor in, in the case of the project or whether that's, you know, some other, you know, failure to accurately budget for the project. Either of those things should be for public discussion. I, I get that. I think that's more like what I'm, what I'm talking about in this situation. I get what you're saying. I mean, it would be a rare situation and, which is the point, you would want that, the optics on that.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I was going to point out is that the proposed language actually says that results in a cumulative increase of the original contract by 20% or greater. So smaller amounts could still fly under the radar, but when you hit that 20% threshold, bam, you got to tell, you know, council, so there's going to have...
Okay, so, so if, whether it's one change order or three, once it gets to 20%...
Once the cumulative...
Once it hits $20,000, you have to...
It's not, it's not just individual, like if one is less than, one is more.
You can't fly under the radio with all of them and thus avoid ever going back to council.
Just for my benefit, just, just clear, whenever you have a change order, you say, you always say, I remember the words, I think, funds are available.
Yes.
Does that mean the funds are available for that specific, from that specific account?
Yes, whatever I note in the packet, yes.
Can I jump in on that? I wanted to say that back here. So, it's very important to note where most of what we're talking about is capital projects.
Right.
And we can't do budget transfers for that, so if we need more money in a capital project, it takes a budget amendment, so we, we would be back for you. So, when Jennifer started talking and some of the research she had done had said, well, if it's within the original project budget, really, these have to be within that original project budget or else we're back to get a budget amendment anyway.
Perfect, okay.
And I wanted to mention one other, just really quickly. One of our metrics that we report monthly in the results SBY every month is our change order percentage, what we strive for is 5%. So, I support Jennifer's research on the 20% as an industry standard, but our goal still as, as managing projects is 5% change orders. So, that doesn't change anything with this policy, but I did want you all to know that, and, and we track that, and the mayor and Julia see that number monthly where we are with all construction projects and how they're tracking. So, thought that was important to note.
And it's not our intent in the FY '21 budget to propose a change to that, and council continues to adopt that as part of the budget, so whether council wanted to move that up or down, that would be.
Perfect. Okay, we have consensus. Come on, that one. With the modification, with, with the modification suggested. Cumulative, cumulative.
Oh, that's already in there.
It's already in there, by the word, right, Mark?
It is.
It's in the code.
Okay.
And it's, it's in that threshold summary, and what he wrote mirrors that, so. Okay, the next item is 2.36.040. That is the procedure for the disposition of surplus, surplus or unused real property, and then also section 2.36.050, the selection of winning proposals. Right now, the code states that once property, real property is surplus by the city of Salisbury, our method for, say, disposing of that is to invite proposals for development. There may be, and there sort of has been some situations where maybe a development proposal isn't necessary. Possibly the city has a lot that we just wanna sell, and I don't wanna say not worry about what gets developed on that lot, but we don't necessarily want to put any covenants or restrictions on that lot, or ask the developer to prepare a huge proposal to tell us what they're gonna build on it and when they're gonna build on it, and go through a land disposition contract that has stipulations and so on and so forth. We'd like the flexibility to also be able to just ask for bids. And in the case of a bid, take the highest and best bid.
One example of that is 1141, South Division that we're dealing with right now. You know, city has, at least the administration has no position on what the use is. I mean, as long as it's compliant with zoning, we don't care. Another example is the opposite of that is 4, what is it, 407, next to Christian Shelter, where we know exactly what we want, or, well, we're trying to articulate what we want. And then, there you wanna go through the RFP process, but, but, you know, in 1141, you, you know, we could craft a lengthy proposal, you know, request for proposals that says what we want, but we have no opinion. And in fact, it's probably better if we let them.
So, we already, in, in that case specifically, we did already put out a request for proposals. We got no bids per the code. We have six months to receive any additional offers. So, that's, that's where we are right now. So, adding this, this minor word of bids into this language just gives us another vehicle when it's determined that it's really not feasible, necessary, warranted to request a full-on development proposal from a vendor. They are time-consuming for, you know, for them to prepare, they can be costly for them to prepare. We also do state with this, a minor change, that, you know, we request a bid or proposal, but then the council still may ask for some other information.
But again, you, you state in the, you put it out that it would have to be within code, whatever they're gonna do with the, as one of the stipulations, it has to be within code?
Within.
No, no, you wouldn't articulate that in a, because that's, that's given, they have to follow zoning law. And they wouldn't need to even propose the use. It would just be a price, it would just be a bid.
Okay.
So, the only, the only thing they'd be bidding on would be price.
Okay. Problem with that, anybody? Consensus?
Okay. I'm going to jump down to 2.36.070. That is the award of bid for said parcels. And again, right now, we require that a land, it results in some type of a disposition contract, but right now, it says the disposition contract shall contain certain requirements. Those requirements being for the developer or the buyer to show us a proposal of what they're going to build on the lot, to give us their demonstrated financial and legal ability to purchase, so on and so forth. Again, right now, the code says that we have to put these things in the development proposal. We're saying, we'd like the option, say, they may be in, in the disposition contract.
Still come before the planning.
Right. And the, and the, the way the code was previously worded, it said that, you know, the, the council shall, you know, that the document shall, or to be implemented with the provisions in that section, but then it said the provisions as are approved by the council. So, in my opinion, it should be at the discretion of the council how complex a disposition agreement you wanna have with a buyer. And that's what this is. I mean, you can make it as complicated or as simple as you want to based on the transaction.
I wish you a shawun me.
I take those two words very seriously.
We all do.
She's my wife. Okay?
Okay. The last item is the charter change. It's okay.
Okay.
So, this is section 16-3. That's the competitive bidding exceptions, and I'd like to add two exceptions to competitive bidding, and it's item 10 and 11. The first would be contracts for perishable, perishable goods purchased in small quantities such as animal food products or nutritional supplements. The zoo. It is extremely difficult to get any competitive pricing on meat, frozen mice, may, so on and so forth.
Okay, we get it.
And the last one will be contracts, again, exempt from competitive bidding, contracts for entertainers, performers, artists, musicians, actors, speakers, and other talent providers necessary to conduct budgeted City of Salisbury events. You could maybe consider them as a.
Maryland folk festival.
There you go.
Gotcha. Any, anybody have any problem with those?
I'm done.
You got me to say yes to a charter change.
See, that's an easy one.
All right, thank you. Grocery store to get that meat. Ms. Lance, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, is a draft ordinance for a gender-inclusive bathroom bill. So, leading up to the City of Salisbury elections in November, PFLAG, and there are members in the audience here with us today, sent out a candidate forum on if, if candidates for council would be interested in supporting a gender-neutral bathroom legislation. So, that's where this idea originated from. Baltimore City last year passed this bill, basically this, this bill, we, we took it from them. The bill would, throughout the City of Salisbury, any public restroom that is a single-use bathroom. So, you think of the bathrooms that rise up or one, one person in, would, would make it so that within six months of this piece of legislation passing, the, the signage on those bathrooms would have to read, some of the examples are below, restroom, bathroom, toilet, family-use restroom, would not put a gender to be associated with this. And we're doing this, obviously, for, to be gender-inclusive with non-binary folks and transgender folks, but also mothers, fathers with kids, somebody that needs help with care, a number of reasons, it just makes sense for shorter bathroom lines, for us ladies, we know how that feels. It's just, it's just good business. So, I, I would propose, I, I think, I think the language is also important to be able to, to show the community why we're doing this, so, under the definitions of gender-inclusive signage, I, I would recommend that we add also gender-neutral or gender-inclusive bathroom to be included in the verbiage that we accept. Also, we would be asking HCDD to, Housing Community Development, our code enforcement unit, to enforce this if we became aware of an issue after the six-months time period was up.
Questions? Problems with it?
Can I add that it would, that would be on existing structures, but there would also be plan review component from a DID standpoint, you know, just looking at, at plans, ensuring that signage was compliant and things like that. Can I also add, as a daddy with two little girls, it's, it would be very nice to not have to wait for everybody to get out of the bathroom and, you know.
So, you can use the changing table.
Well, and, and if there's a single, I, fortunately, I'm out of the changing table stage, but, but, you know.
Maybe your grandkids come, maybe you'll find out.
It's like you might have, I have a grandson that I have to carry to the bathroom.
I object to you wishing that upon me at this stage in my life.
Well, it's, it's also good for, for families with disabled kids. I, I know, you know, my son is 25 now, it's very awkward taking him into a restroom, you know, like parents do, only he's fully grown. So, you know, I, I, I know this is gonna help a lot of people, not just who it's targeted at, although that's, I think, is a great, a great thing to be doing.
I, I know there are a number of folks that have joined us today from various organizations, and I don't know if, if they're able to speak or if they wanna speak.
Dave, welcome to, any kind of statements that you'd like to make?
Salisbury PFLAG did.
Gotta take the hot seat.
Salisbury PFLAG did introduce a formal statement, I believe, and again, just to reiterate, it's about inclusivity and not just one for the LGBTQ population, but also families with young children, but also adult caregivers of adult children, and it's also supported by the American Restroom Association as a best practice for a number of reasons. One, it helps maintain facilities because they're used more equitably, so it's less wear and tear on these facilities. It helps when one bathroom is down for a reason, it allows everyone to use the other one. So, that's, that's it.
Also, as, as chair of the, of the city's Human Rights Advisory Committee, I also wanna weigh in and just reiterate that for all of the reasons Nicole already talked about, our, our advice to the mayor is that they, that he should be behind this legislation. So, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have consensus?
Yes, thank you guys for, for bringing it up.
So, you can see.
Before we start this, I wanna say that the setup of this thing is so simple.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Seriously, the drop-down screens, it's perfect. Well, I shouldn't say it's perfect, 'cause it always gets better. But it, it, it makes, it makes things a lot simpler.
But I think if, if I can just say that the cooperative effort of the finance team and the communications team, specifically in communications, Chris Demone spent a lot of time on the, ensuring that the document is legible and easily understandable, not only to council who sees these things and is used to reviewing them, but also to, you know, the average citizen. If you look at capital improvement plans of other governments, they are not in any way simple or easy to understand. And the same is true of our budget, and if you look at the reason, you know, we won those budget presentation awards because they're clear documents and easy to understand, and credit goes to Mr. Cordery and his team, as well as Mr. Demone and Ms. Brown.
It's a lot different than five years ago, let me tell you. I do have some questions, though, a few. Okay, so let's, Mr. Cordery, why don't you start?
I can just call to your attention, it's organized very similar to the prior years. There's a summary by program, and then there's a summary which lists the projects by funding source, which is, I find, the most useful. And then, after that, the document has the projects for each department, two to, two to a page, and has the details about each project. The planning was done with similar constraints to what we did in previous years, where we target, trying to limit items funded from general revenues to 1.2 million. You will see that we come close to that, we, we don't try to hit that number exactly. This is similar to a finalist, and we, we thin that out as we go to budget. We also review the impact on debt service, we're mindful of the financial policy that restricts debt service to 10% of our expenditures, so we keep an eye on that as well. So, that's just a quick introduction to the document and to some of our planning.
Question for you. What's the net change in debt service based on this?
I have that number. So... The debt service started at 4.2, at the end of, at the end of '21 was at 4.2 million, and it ended at 5.7 million. Through that stretch, through, through that five-year stretch.
If we were to fund everything. Which I'll say to the department heads in the room, we definitely want to do it. But we do not.
We're pretty, we're pretty sure we won't, we won't, we won't be able to do all of that.
Right. Another question, just as, I don't know if you have this one. What's the net lease change? Do you have that?
I, I don't have the lease payment amount, I have the total amount that was funded from lease.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we funded in '21, 2.2 million, '22, 2.1 million, '23, 1.2, '24, 1, and in '25, 368,000, for a total through the five-year period of 7.1 million.
Okay.
And we can, and Keith has shared with us what the net change, or what the net is, you know, 'cause as you can imagine, you know, one ladder truck coming off is $1.4 million or $1. So, there, I'm not suggesting that it is a net of zero, but there, there's obviously lease payments that come off before we add new lease, lease payments. And I didn't mean to call special attention to the fire department.
Well, they, they drive big things. Other than little cars. I'm gonna ask it anyway, because I just, net depreciation?
That, that number's not in, in this, in this packet.
Can you get that for me, the one?
Yeah, I can get that for you, sure.
Okay, great. Okay. That's the top introduction, questions? That's the top introduction questions. Are we, do you want to handle questions or concerns on sections?
So, Mr. President, I think we'll handle it anyway. We've got the department heads here who have an item in the CIP at your disposal to either answer questions, concerns, specific interests, we can do that by department or just however you'd like to handle it.
Phone job 11. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up specifically, if you're going through it? Okay, I'll go. GOB, any consideration for security improvements?
Jennifer, do you want to? And I should note that what drives, what has driven our capital improvements of the GOB historically, now, we are now an owner, that did change from the last CIP to this CIP, but what has driven those changes is what the county asks for. Again, has, you know, we didn't have a deed.
No.
We didn't have an ownership stake until this year, so you could maybe speak to whether or not that's been a conversation at all?
It has not, because the next two years, there are two very large projects that have taken priority. One is the air handler in the basement, the other is the roof. They're quite expensive, and there's, there's been no other talk of additional security measures within the building at this point. Either, I'm guessing you're talking maybe of, maybe in terms of door security, not necessarily guard security?
Yes.
Okay.
We periodically have pulled together Police Department and the Sheriff's Department to sort of evaluate this. And, I'm trying to say this.
My only comment is, as part owner of the building now, with what's going on in this nation, I'm concerned.
I think the people that work in this building every day would probably agree with you. There is very little in the way of security, once, you know, and what, you know, even once past the security desk, once you're in the building, there's freedom of movement from floor to floor.
Yeah, you can get any place in this building.
From office to office. There is cam, there's surveillance, but not, no, no mechanism of prevention, other than the security guard at the front desk, which is admittedly limited. The improvements that the county has made include FOB access to the stairwell next to the back entrance, and the same, and FOB access to the, this stairwell as well, which actually, on this side, does prevent movement from floor to floor, but it's open the other. So, it's, it's, there are certainly physical improvements that could lend to security, and it's something that we could lead. Our building agreement requires, the GOB agreement requires city and county, executive and mayor, to agree to adding anything to either budget plan. So neither can obligate the other to an expenditure, and obviously, nothing can be spent without putting it in the budget and going to council. So, so we both have to agree, but we can certainly lead the way. We haven't done it historically, but we could suggest, hey, here are some improvements we'd like to see, and then put those on our CIP, put those on our budget planning timeline.
I know there's some interest on the council level, at the county level.
I agree with one of your eleven.
Mr. President, in terms of proceeding with something like that, we might want to do some internal planning at the city level, city only, about what we'd like to see, and then maybe take a list to the county. You okay with that?
Whatever, whatever, yeah. I just, I would just like to see it a little tighter.
Okay.
Next on my list is IS, IT. Cybersecurity.
Yes.
Where are we?
We are, we do a couple of things annually. Annually, we do a phishing test, we send interesting emails to all staff in the city, and see who falls for what, see who clicks what, see who does things that they shouldn't do, and we have custom tailored training for all staff. We mandate it once a year, fail to comply results, and all of your accounts being turned off, and you can't do any checking. So we do that. We also have a touch base with the Department of Homeland Security. They have, they have cybersecurity resources available to municipal, county, and state agencies, where they will, it handles everything from, from trying to penetrate your external security to internal phishing, to social engineering. It's a completely free service that they offer, and we've got information on that, we're speaking with them now to facilitate some of that, at no cost to us.
I'm specifically looking at, I've looked through your, through the projects, and I don't see anything, is there any, is there anything we can do from a hardware standpoint that we need?
That's, that's all level funded in the budget.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
Okay. That's it?
Okay.
The, we don't go anywhere.
Oh, wait, sorry.
That was getting up easy.
So you got your plan for fiber backbone expansion, and then I also see the municipal broadband? You want to expand on those a little bit?
Sure, the fiber backbone, I'll get the exact locations. Fiber backbone is our, part of the connectivity division. Right now, we've got a fiber optic backbone that links the three main hubs, the GOB, fire, and police. We also have arms that link out to, to utilities office, field operations, my office in information services. There are a few major facilities that are not connected. This plan is going to connect the wastewater treatment plant, paleo and park plants, then the city zoo into the fiber optic ring, so that all of the facilities with people with more than like three staff are connected to fiber as opposed to the existing, it's called a BOVPA connection, it's basically a private tunnel through Comcast. It'll create a much higher speed, much faster, much more reliable and efficient way of working for the remote offices to communicate with any other city resources.
Is this a closed network?
Yes, it's a private closing network, it's, we're leasing dark fiber from the Maryland Broadband Cooperative. The reason, just kind of for future scalability, the reason we're not doing it with HCDD or the Business Development Office, is because when the Main Street Master Plan is done, we, there, part of the agreement is that we receive strands of fiber for free, and then we can just light those up and lose people.
Municipal broadband?
Yeah, that is a, that's a, an interesting, the mayor had the idea of. For that reason, it's here, do you have a bus for me to?
We have seven buses.
And I think all of them just ran over.
The municipal broadband is an idea of offering a lower-cost offer to the citizens of the city here for, as an alternative to any of the major internet service providers. This is a rather large project, and what we're looking at doing for the first year is doing the feasibility study, which would bring in an external consultant to look at the various methods, the various ways of doing this, this project, and seeing if it's, number one, is it feasible at all? Number two, where could we start, which area, because it would be a phased approach for different neighborhoods, sectors, regions, whatever you want to call them, of the city. Find out if it's feasible, where to begin, what kind of structure would be best, what kind of investment we would end up making, and then from there, we'd look at scaling it up, if it's even something that would be feasible to do. So the first phase is just simply a feasibility study.
And that's not until '23? That's what I'm.
Twenty-three?
One second. Pages are stuck together. Is it traffic system?
It is, it's 20. So, and we met with, we met with a service provider outside of the area.
Yeah.
We've met with a service provider who has authorization from their board of directors to do this sort of work outside of their current service area, something that they're interested in. It would be, it would be intended to be a business, possibly a business enterprise of the city, so an enterprise fund, meaning that it would either generate revenue enough to cover costs, or at least generate, you know, rev, some revenue to mitigate costs. The reality is, there are lots of hurdles. It's very expensive to do. Once you do it, you need a good partner, because you get into the business of being an internet service provider essentially, so, you know, you need a partner who's willing to do all the in-home work of being an ISP. That's not something that I think we should get into internally, and we, we agree on that. But I also think there are a lot of hurdles legislatively that may be put in front of us if we try to go down this route. I do think there are very large companies out there that will try to stop us. And we should be aware of that before we go into anything. And then ultimately, I think, you know, we should look at, are there other ways we can address this? I mean, the bottom line is, there are people living in neighborhoods in our community who cannot afford internet at commercial rates. And thus, those children don't have access to do their homework on an iPad or whatever at home, the way that, or even a phone or a computer, the way that their affluent neighborhood might. That disadvantage is something that other municipalities have seen fit to try to mitigate through municipal broadband. Not the only solution, Comcast, for example, has Internet Essentials, we could work with them to broaden the reach of that program. There are probably parallel programs from other service providers, but exploring this is something that we put into the CIP first, either two years ago or last year.
Two years.
Two years ago, so it's been in the CIP for two years. Obviously, we still see it as a project that's a little ways off, or we're going to be prepared to dive into it. If the council sees fit, then we should.
I mean, I, I think the, the other aspect of it, not just residential, but expanding it to.
Commercial.
Business development. And industrial areas, I mean, then you really open up the floodgates to technology companies looking at, because that's what they want, they want that, that connection.
And the other part of this is that we are already, our toes in the water. We are doing it in downtown. You know, it's not lit yet, but we are installing it actively through the Main Street Master Plan Project, stubbed into every business in every building, residential or commercial, on the Main Street and Division Street corridor, so, you know, our toe's about to be in that water fully, and we, the question is, do we go further?
Anything else? Thank you. My next one is fire department. Have we, no, it's, it's only one. Oh, good. Maybe. We've been through the whole thing on EMS rigs over the years.
So, EMS?
EMS rigs.
Ambulances.
Have we settled on the, have we got one now? Yes. Okay. Yes, the current, the current vehicle that we have has been a phenomenal vehicle, provides a great ride for the patient and the providers in the back, riding down our streets, so, yes. So the prices there, the prices in the CIP is for those ambulances that make? Yes, with an additional four-wheel drive. Yeah, I saw that, I saw that, yeah. Okay. That was you. Anybody else for fire department?
I can just say, we've taken a ride in one of the, I think it was that vehicle recently, so. It was pretty, it was pretty smooth.
What's the, the, have we identified any property on the north end for the?
No, we continue to walk for the property on the north end, problem with the north end property, you know, the price tag that's associated with property, especially main corridor area, so we're starting to expand our search farther off the main corridor area. So hopefully, we will eventually pinpoint a good location for that. Don't forget that road behind. There's several roads back there, but. Price tag. Field ops.
Will I get to stay here?
I saw the, thank God, the administration building for the zoo. Question, and this is not a loaded question. Have we looked at double wide versus a solid from a life expectancy and cost?
While we're proposing, it's basically.
I know, I saw that. My question is, if we look at an alternative to expand maybe the.
Not for that price tag, no.
Okay.
And we have looked at another building over there, but, I mean, recognize that it may, we, it may be the sort of thing that we dive into, costs that are far beyond what we can.
No, I, I just, I'm always afraid when I walk in there that I'm going to end up butt to my knees in the floor. We need to get that done, I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's in the.
And this is actually the second piece, I mean, it was, we put money in last year, but it.
This year, and then the balance in the.
The balance is in 2000. But we'll get, get it done in the early portion of next year.
Should be done by summer.
Second question about water. I know we, we had done a lot of upgrades or changes down by the park. Right, well, there was.
Valves metering.
Valves meters, all that stuff.
Yes.
None of the valves and meters, we're not replacing those that are in the, it wasn't really that clear in the CIP.
For the valve and meter replacement, that's money that we have set aside to replace two-inch water made, because there's quite a bit of that still out there.
So it's nothing to do with.
And valves as well, we've recently metered the zoo on both ends, so we know how much water we're using there.
Okay. I also saw in the water treatment plant, meters for $60,000. See, you made the dropdown so easy to find stuff. Just needs a lot of money for meters.
What page is it on?
You go to the dropdown. You can get back to me on it, it's got to be some kind of support for the.
It's hard, but it's really Cory's project, I'm not sure how it ended up here, but I think there's just.
Sorry.
Two high-flow meters.
Yeah, there's six, six or eight inch.
Yeah, the wastewater plant is actually not metered, and they do use potable water in the processes, so it was based on, they are high-flow meters, so that's why it's more significant.
Okay. Just as a question, there's a zoning code in Infrastructure and Development, there's a zoning code in the Capitol? What is that?
Yes, so that is our zoning code revisions, and we actually listed it in the CIP, we funded the first piece of it this year in FY '20, and it actually ended up getting funded out of operating, but it is a multi-year project, so we kept it in the CIP. But this is accelerating, it was going to be a three-year project, this is accelerating it to a two-year project, and putting in the next two phases in FY '21. So this is the full rewrite of the zoning code that we're working on, that JMT did the presentation at work session, just giving you the overview of where they are and starting that happening.
Per the, per the city's financial rules, when it's a multi-year project of that scale, yeah, we have to show it as a.
Okay. What's another one I've, first time in.
Yeah, it's not, you know.
Can I ask a question?
Keith's shaking her head because she knows that I'm taking.
The new salt barn, $500,000, could you tell me what's going to be different?
It'll likely be bigger than what we have right now, and everything's expensive these days, so, just in the design, you probably got, believe it or not, probably $100,000 in the design, so it's an expensive item. And that includes all of the stormwater management and all of that preparation as opposed to.
Is it going to be in the same location?
Probably not. Probably not near where it is now, but not in that same footprint. So, we'll take whatever storage we have, build a new structure and move it over and then demolish the old one. But that's one we just put a place marker in for because we may be able to get a few more years out of the current structure.
Poplar Hill Mansion?
Yes, sir.
Are we on track with...because I know there's some major issues with some rotten siding and...
Yeah, we had asked for $25,000 in funding. We got 12, 5, and we're looking to offset the balance in '19 to get the work done. So, we're getting close to getting that finished. And then we've got some other projects.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
I think Poplar Hill had requested in inverse order, but we moved ADA ramp to number one since that's a higher priority. I think the shutters would move back here.
The shutters were really as a result of a requirement from the Maryland Historical Trust. That's why we have our other...
Yeah, so MHT would probably tell us that the shutters are more important, but you know, we've made a judgment call here.
Well, we had several complaints about...
I don't think anybody...
Right.
That's right, about accessibility.
Yeah.
I mean, and understanding that it is under an MHT easement, they do have authority, but ultimately, the fiduciary responsibility lies here.
Right. I was just under the understanding it's going to be hard to...if the ramp went in first, it was going to be harder to put the siding in because they would have to take the ramp out of the way. So, what...
That's correct. The siding is...will happen before the ramp because the siding is funded this year partially, but we'll execute on that prior to the...yeah.
So, we're only doing the siding on the kitchen addition now and that'll allow us to put the ADA ramp in and then we'll be looking at doing the entire structure at some point.
I'm sided.
And then, so in order, it's siding, ramp, and bathroom, then shutters last.
Cool. Okay. Andy, you and I have had discussions about...I saw there's some very interesting stuff in there about impervious surfaces.
Yes.
Are we considering some of that pervious concrete?
Yeah, pervious concrete, so certainly.
Is that...that's expensive.
It's expensive. I don't necessarily have a project right now, but we can certainly look at that, especially in parking areas.
Good.
So, yeah, absolutely.
I trust you.
Always on the table.
And the last question, there's a bunch of street reconstruction projects. When we complete those, have we taken care of 90% of the...whatever, we number them?
We all get older. So, it's really...
You never...
It's never going to be over.
Yeah, but we were playing catch...we've been playing catch-up.
Now, I attended...yeah, we have. I attended a meeting of the Maryland Mayors Association last month and there was significant discussion about how municipalities could get on there, could get a better handle on what should be paved. And I was stunned that no one else in the room had ever undertaken a paving analysis, which we did, what, four years ago, Amanda? So, one of the things that we are looking at and it's, I think it's in here, is it not, for a future year?
To redo the IMS, the paving model, yes.
Okay.
Because we're...so, we are catching up and we've made great strides.
Oh, yeah.
But then some of the other streets are getting over, so we'll want to do a reassessment.
So, pavement condition index is under fiscal year '22 for $23,000 and that would be a reassessment of every street in the city, determining its status on that zero-to-six numerical scale, determining...and then again, you know, something that I think is highly valuable to know and to be able to share with the public when they ask you about, you know, what are you going to pave my street? The council passed months ago, right, a word of bid for several services for resurfacing streets, using different techniques depending on the condition.
Wind surfacing and slurry and just other types of surface treatment that's not full repaving so that we can try to take the streets that aren't in as bad condition and give them some surface treatment and try to prolong their life before they need a full reconstruction.
Because some of those that are not, you know, failing at a structural level are chipping badly at the top and lead to more phone calls, even though they're in fairly good condition from a structural standpoint. I think even like Crestview and Ridge, like near May, those two, the streets are fine, but there's a lot of chipping, you know, at the edges and they result in phone calls even though they're in good condition.
So, this year in the CIP, we are targeting about 25% of our funding for street reconstruction to be methods like that and then about 75% to still be major reconstruction projects. So, we're going to trial those out and I think that'll give a lot of attention to some of the residential streets that don't see as much traffic, but the residents will be happy to see that their street's getting attention.
Any other questions for the CIP? Again, nice job. Really good job all the way around. I think we're going to be with...
Sorry to keep you here, Colonel.
That's right.
You don't want another car, do you?
I'm surprised I didn't get the, you know, the giant tire pile.
There were no questions about the giant tire pile.
You get off easy.
Having some bad days these days, I'll take that in.
Asking for it, wasn't there?
All right. If there's nothing else on the CIP, could I suggest a five-minute bio break before we continue the...we have a presentation. And you guys are welcome to stay or...we have a presentation by one of our council people.
Thank you all.
Thank you.